Calling the order, meeting of the Bloomfield Schools Board of Education. Can you take attendance, please, Paul?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Carolyn's taking attendance. I apologize.
Whatever you want me to do.
You're going to consent it, Jeff, sorry.
Well, Trusty Kumar, Colin Fallon, Hill are here, but Southward and Van Gummert are not.
Okay. We have two.
Unique way to do it.
Hey.
But we have a majority present today.
Majority is present. We have a quorum, so we can go forward.
All right, thank you. Next, the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the discussion, item 2A, the bond quarterly report from Alan Dresselhaus and Paul Wills from Blantmore and Willpoint.
All right, Wayne, just want to congratulate the board and the bond team. We had a fantastic year. We made some huge accomplishments with some very short durations to make things happen. But with the tremendous work with Keith and Dave Shulkin and Randy certainly, we got through it. With respect to punch list items right now, we're saying about 90% of all of our punch list identified items we've reached, and so we're really hoping to have that at 100% by year end. So we can just run through that if you want.
Yep, mhm.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Wills and I are here to report on basically some of the 2023 accomplishments. We're going to talk a little bit about what's coming up in 2024 with respect to projects we already have in process. And we're going to talk a little bit about our design development, what we're currently working on for future projects. We're going to talk about the transportation center, give the board a quick update and the community as to where we're at with that. I'm going to touch on the finances and where we're at with our bond schedule. And then we're going to conclude with just giving the board a quick update on our mapping with respect to when we'll be coming back to the board with bid pack recommendations and so forth. So first, want to touch on our district accomplishments for the elementary schools and how that is relates to what we promised the community. We hit all our check marks. So we delivered on pretty much everything that we needed to with respect to the new additions, renovations at Conant and Way. Kindergarten room renovations at Eastover and Lone Pine turned out to be fantastic, a big success there. We implemented safety, security, new ADA compliance, handicap accessibility, and certainly municipal code requirements. All those were implemented into the elementary schools. Some of the educational improvements include the new front of the classroom displays, new technology devices, and some infrastructure wireless and things like that upgraded and implemented. Critical infrastructure upgrades and improvements also went into place, card access, things of that nature, fob detection. We put in new playground equipment at both the elementaries. And then site work improvements, which we're not completely wrapped up with yet, but that includes landscaping and parking lot realignments and new paving projects. A couple of quick pictures here of the improvements. We've got the typical new kindergarten classroom, highlighting the new cubbies and sinks and lockers. We've got the playground equipment that's been installed, Ingenuity Lab with all the new furniture, bright colorful spaces with the LED lighting. Turning our attention over to the middle schools. So again, we hit all the boxes that we promised we would deliver on. The new construction renovations of the North Hills Middle School, absolutely a beautiful school. New additions and renovations at the South Hills Middle School. The new naditorium that's being opened up at North, which we passed our fire and life safety today, so we're really making, that was a huge accomplishment. So we're actually on track to having that work completed ahead of schedule. The athletic field improvements at South, the safety, security, again, the municipal code upgrades we had to implement. Educational improvements, again, front of classroom technology devices, infrastructure, and then again, some site work, the new landscaping and parking pods out in the front of the site. Some neat pictures here just showing what the naditorium is looking like currently. As you can see, it's pretty much ready to be opened. They're going through and putting the flags up currently, getting the emergency phones installed. The new video display board is up, being connected now. We've got the new auditorium that went into place with the new seating and stage. The softball field at North, which is brand new, looks amazing for a middle school. It's nicer than most of the high schools that I've seen. And then obviously, the new sports turf field that has been implemented over at South, just phenomenal and really is giving the district a lot more opportunities for their kids at the school. So what are we working on right now for in current projects? So we are wrapping up the baseball and softball field upgrades at the high school. We've implemented the new turf. We are working on finalizing some of the spectator seating around the softball field, putting the existing seating back in place at the baseball. And then we are installing some emergency devices that are being required by code. Blooming East, which we just started demolition on, and obviously, the goal is that we'll be moving the occupants from Fox Hills over to Blooming East, starting in, it'll be the start of the new school year. So what we're doing now is the demo. We've got the new secure vestibule going in place, main office, the interior cosmetic renovations that will be taking place, casework, paint, flooring, cubicles, new doors, hardware, signage. We've got selected furniture and equipment that's going into place, life safety upgrades throughout, mechanical upgrades, and parking lot modifications. So that work has started and is on track to be completed before school year of next year. Just a couple of quick pictures. There's an aerial of the new softball field and baseball field that has been completed, the netting and poles, and fence adjustments are taking place currently. And then you can see over at Blooming East, the demolition where the ceiling is now out, ripping out all the old cable, tearing down some of the partition walls and some of the other things, flooring in the corridors, and preparation for the new lighting and flooring, all the other nice improvements that are going to be going in. So what are we working on for '24? Some big stuff. We've got the wellness center and the concessions addition that's going to be taking place. So we're going to have a beautiful new wellness center that's going to be attached to the high school. That is going to be close for the first and second floor, close to a 10,000 square foot addition. That is going to include speed and agility training for the students. We've got designated weightlifting and cardio equipment that's going to be going in. We have facility and athletic designated storage we're creating. We're updating and introducing some public and family restroom designs, redesigns. We've got team meeting rooms and restrooms for the players that are going in. We've got some outdoor storage for some of the track equipment. And then we are extending the existing concession center with new equipment, making it a little bit more user friendly for the patrons to come up and get some concessions. With that, we are starting the work now at the elementary schools, which we've deemed phase two. And what is phase two? That's getting the new secure vestibules designed and ready to be implemented, reconfiguration of the existing vestibules at Eastover and Lone Pine. We've got classroom technology, the new flat screens are going to be going in, got security upgrades, card access and things going in. And then obviously, we're going to be procuring and installing all of the new classroom furniture over the summer of '24. So that will be really exciting for the teachers and the students to see coming in the fall. Here's a couple of renderings, which I've showed the board before, of what the new wellness addition will look like, both exterior and interior. As you can see, it's going to be state of the art, and it'll be second to none within the state here. At this time, I'll turn it over to Paul. He's going to talk a little bit about the finances and the schedule, and then talk about transportation.
Thank you, Alan, and good evening, board. One of the things that we've done on a regular basis, especially working with the finance committee with the board, is give the financial models of where we're at to date. As Alan mentioned, with the completion of phase one, which was really to allow the district to get into a K5, 6, 8, 9, 12 cohort, that represented about $114 million. As you can see with the wellness center, some of the additional work in the phase two portions of the elementaries, that takes us about $146.5 million of work, either in place or curling design. Roughly $53.9 million of future. So again, Mr. Dresselhaus will talk about what do the future bid packs look like as a board and as a community. We've taken a look at some of the scope. So again, when you plan a bond, back in 2020, 2019, you really do a space and scope validation. So we've had a chance to do that, identify projects that, let's say, potentially may not be needed. So for instance, there's a placeholder for asbestos. The district's done a really nice job over the years of not necessarily having to, you know, take out the asbestos as part of the bond. I'm also looking at mechanical, electrical, and some other critical infrastructure, as well as technology. The district actually had to transfer about $735,000 from the food services to pay for the new kitchen equipment over at the middle schools, which has been great. At the end of the day, we're tracking very well. The other thing that we're identifying and tracking is you've invested that first two series of bonds, it's generated about $2.4 million of interest earnings. So again, be working with the finance committee and ultimately with the board, coming back sometime in the December and January timeframe, to say as we go into those design programs, what are some of those things that we should be considering to make sure that we're really tracking to the four pillars of the bond program itself. So switching gears a little bit, so this was something that was asked of the board. We had a presentation in May that showed a couple of different options for transportation. So as part of the bond plan back in 2020, it was to really go purchase the site and construct about a 25,000 square foot facility for transportation operations and physical plant. You see the breakdown between the 2.5 million for purchasing land and 11 for constructing the structures. In May of '22, so just over a year and a half ago, we looked at a presentation of looking at potentially four sites for purchase and development. Unfortunately, with Bloomfield, a lot of those sites back up to residential neighborhoods. And then we looked at the six sites currently owned by the district. So again, we gave a presentation this past summer, really looking at conserving green space, also cognizant of that the price for construction is up about 35 to 40% for steel masonry type constructions. So at the end of the due diligence period, we're here today because of the cost escalation, because a lot of the new properties are basically in the same kind of situation you're at with the current facility. The bond program team is recommending that the maintains the current facility, allocate roughly $4 million for site improvements, sound attenuation, enhancing the base service base, et cetera, but keep the transportation facility where its current location is at. What that would do is then allow the board to potentially reallocate those funds for transportation, again, looking at the educational environment, looking at some of those critical infrastructure items going forward. So again, that's kind of where we're at with the update for the transportation center update itself. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Dresselhaus to kind of walk us through what the remaining bid packs look like, as well as the bidding timeframe. So, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. So this slide just represents where we've been, where we're going, and what we decisions yet need to be made. So as you can see, bid package is 1 through 6.3 are complete. We're now kind of into the next set where we're tracking, but we also are going to be coming on key board decisions, such as the elementary schools phase three, and that really is focused on interior enhancements, carpet, VCT, painting, millwork, lighting, from what monies we would have left perhaps in the bond to make sure we had consistency at all the elementaries. And then obviously, we need to make some decisions with regards to transportation and maintenance. So this is just a very high level, and it is shared on the website. This is a quick touch point as to where you can expect bid pack to come to the board for approval and recommendation. As you can see, the high school athletic renovations, which is the wellness center, it's out to bid, went out to bid today, and we are hoping to come to the board in mid-January with our bid pack results on that, and recommendations for funding for the wellness center. With that also, we are coming to the board shortly thereafter that with high school athletic gateway, which would be some more or less an entrance from the parking pods onto the athletic fields of more of a welcoming type of entrance with a little ticket booth and perhaps some additional restrooms or smaller restrooms that could be serviced by the home stands over there. We have the elementary school phase two, so everything is being designed right now for the elementary school phase two, which I alluded to was the kind of the core infrastructure stuff, things that necessarily aren't visual but are impactful, such as all the Dable cabling, the technology, the Wi-Fi installation, the new Wi-Fi installation, security cameras. Furniture will be part of that as well. So you can see, we're targeting that to be coming to the board sometime in February for procurement. Obviously, we'll be wanting to start that work as soon as school gets out in June. And then we have some other things on here. We've got the building demolition, which we're going to be looking to do, at least start the process at Fox Hills as soon as we can move the occupants and the materials out of there over to the new school. So we'll be looking to do that in probably, I would say, September of 2024, taking the building down in the fall, maybe into the winter of 2025. Then we're going to be working on the phase three of the elementary schools, which is what I stated, the painting, the cabinetry, flooring, lighting, and with decisions the board will make here over the next few months, we'll have a better idea of if we have the ability to put additional monies into doing some additional improvements into those elementary schools for phase three. And then we have Blooming West renovations, which is on hold right now, pending what we decide to do with Conant in the pre-case classrooms, and then also robotics, which has been discussed, transportation and maintenance, which we're going to be talking about, obviously, and then the Farm IA high school renovations booth, all that would be beginning probably the spring of '26. And we're still looking to conclude all of this work, the bond work, by December of 2026. So with that, that concludes the quarterly report, and open it up for questions.
So Paul and Alan, what is the plan for, coming out with a detailed plan for transportation center, as well as the Blooming preschool west? What are the timing there? We had TBDs for both.
Yep, that's a great idea. So great question. So again, if the board's desire is to, again, keep it on site, we've got a great communication with Jake McDermott, his transportation of really what needs to be done to that facility so we could put some cost modeling into it. So we'd probably look to meet with the finance committee sometime in mid to late December, and then maybe come back to the full board that January timeframe to say if this is the direction. Same thing with Blooming West. We've got a price to raise the roof to kind of create that competition where the current media center is at, and then really taking a look at the funds that are available at Conant, again, transfer over. So again, that'd kind of be a one for one versus transportation, which is a total difference of really what was originally planned. So probably in that December timeframe, working with the committee, and ultimately the full board in that January timeframe if.
And then assuming it comes to the board with the recommendation in January, how long would it take to execute that?
Yeah, so the good news is, from a design perspective, the existing transportation facility would probably be a four to five month design timeframe. We'd want to go out for bid sometime in the late summer, early fall. That work could probably take place continuously, just like we've done at South. Same thing with Blooming West. It's a vacant facility, with the exception of Blooming that's currently there. So that would be something we'd want to work around. So that'd be something that could be year round type construction. So similar timeframe, probably six to eight months on the design perspective, probably bid out in summer, fall of '24, and then have it ready for that next summer of '25. So about a year earlier than was initially anticipated on that '26 timeframe.
All right. Should go around for questions. Go around the room. Trusty Noble, any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
No, I heard it is, I heard a lot of this is part of our committee, so I got all my questions answered then.
I have one question about, and this is probably something we can take offline. We had talked at a study session, I think in September, about some of the schools having questions about what was going to be a part of a package in summer next year to complete some details of like, you know, just the small things like the mascots and the name of the school and things like that. And they were trying to get an idea for what should the PTO try and plan for versus what's going to be handled. I don't know, again, we can offline about that. I can talk to Jake and figure that out, but I know that was top of mind for people to try and for planning purposes of the schools all just knowing like the granular detail of exactly what was going to be handled in next summer versus.
Like on the gym floor versus what's going to be on the site.
Versus not on, yeah.
Absolutely. That'd be a great conversation, branding, yep.
And things outside of branding too, but that's an example. But I know that people were just looking for clarity on that, so.
Other things, I guess, I can probably take offline, but I feel the need to at least say it, which is, on some of the items, like I go to the website and look at the bond work there, and some of them mention, with regard to like the camera systems, differences between installing video surveillance or expanding video surveillance. And I guess my only ask is that, as we're doing that, my expectation is that every single site is going to have some common baseline for whatever we're putting in place. So if it's, we need to have X number of cameras around entrances or exits, then that is the standard. And so especially in the areas where it sounds like they don't have any, or maybe they have minimal, that we have some kind of baseline, some kind of philosophy as to why. Similar on that would be the secure vestibles. So I guess one of my questions is, and it doesn't have to be answered now, maybe as we start to prioritize the projects, but can we use that as an attribute as far as planning? Because there are some schools that are still lacking a secure vestibule. So I know that sometimes when we start a project, there's a reason why we may do extra things, but top of mind for me is getting as many of the schools up to the same common ground in terms of security. So secure vestibles and cameras are something that, if we can prioritize in terms of project planning, I would want to do that.
That's a great point. So if you look at East Hills, West Hills, or Lone Pine and Eastover, the main focus there was to get the five classrooms ready for kindergarten to get to the K5. As Mr. Dresselhaus mentioned, that phase two is now let's renovate that secure vestibule to create equality versus the way the Conants, which was actually part of phase one. Some of it was just the first series of bond dollars, you get X amount, but that's definitely why we want to make sure it's in phase two.
Yeah.
And actually, we've had a conversation today, Mr. Shulkin did a really nice job with phase one technology, but what does that phase two look like, you said, in terms of camera systems, card access, connectivity between the buildings? So that'd be part of that conversation with the finance.
It would just, for community, if I can go at the end of this and say, you know, just like you guys had check marks on what we promised, like a community member should be able to say, every single site, no matter which site it is, I guarantee that there's this level of security, and there's, you know, really no differences. Because right now, there's a lot of differences.
There's a lot of.
And community unfortunately is feeling that, and that, and it's hard to explain to them, there's a lot of phases to this, but that's what they're feeling is like, I see this at X, and then here's what I'm experiencing at Y. Why is that? So I would love to see that at some point, you know, I like what we have on the website showing all the things we're doing, but even like photos of what's to come, like here's what it looks like today, tomorrow, you know, here's the expectation for security, for surveillance, for grounds, for whatever it is. I think that would help our community because they are asking us a lot.
Yes.
Like, why don't we, you know, why is it like this?
They need to understand, is it just because of the order of the construction project that it has to go in that way, or is it something that can be changed?
Yep.
I think, as Alan mentioned, you know, again, I think this is great, just to give the general public an idea, but it would be even better to have some, maybe some granular, like, if you go to the website, you look at, let's say, West Hills or Lone Pine, maybe this is phase one completed, and then here's phase two process.
Yeah, I think people would like to know so that, you know, when I go to a school, if I'm a parent and I go, I really, you know, I went to pick up their friends at another school, and they have this, why don't, if I go to this website, I can direct them there and say, hey, it's coming, and here's where it's coming. So by 2024, you can feel safe that your school is going to be, you know, have the vestibule and the cameras or whatever it is, they can have that sense of, I see what's coming, versus like, I don't know, and I don't know why.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
All right. Thank you, PMR team.
Thank you so much.
Oh, sorry, Randy.
I have a question, just a couple of comments if I can. I just wanted to recognize the board oversight committee. It's Representative Colon, Siva Kumar, and John Van Gummert, who have been the board subcommittee and provided, I think, a lot of great direction for us is to make this a smoother process over the last, at least the time I've been here. And so I just want to recognize that. And I also want to, you know, just from a real big picture standpoint, you know, as we're looking at, because one of the questions I get that I know you guys are getting too is, are we going to get, you know, whoever's last on the list, and we know the elementary schools are later on the list, is everything going to be done that we thought was going to be done at those elementary schools? And so especially if we, if we're ready to move ahead with the transportation component, the answer is we're actually probably going to do more than we anticipated at our elementary schools by the time that work is done. So that's a, that's one of the positives, I think, where we're sitting here today with our most recent analysis, that it looks like not only are we going to do what we said we were going to do, but actually probably more at the elementary schools with those major projects. So that's a, I know you guys are getting that question because I'm getting that question. So I just wanted, that's where we're at right now with that component that we feel good about.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, PMR team. Next item on the agenda is item 2B, guest speaker protocols, and I'll turn it over to Trusty Noble and Keith McDonald.
All right. So Trusty Colon, Trusty Hill and I were charged with the reviewing the facts, well, we reviewed on the facts and circumstances surrounding the 2023 student-led diversity assembly, including the circumstances leading up to the assembly. The policy committee was charged with reviewing any loopholes or issues on the board policy with Keith McDonald. And when we considered any issues, we thought about student safety issues and family notification issues. We also considered our main mission though, which is to prepare all students to be lifelong learners and engaged citizens in a safe and supportive environment that is equitable and inclusive. So we found that we are missing a process to review guest speaker presentations on our campus. We reviewed all of our policies and procedures. The committee wants to stress that we support continuing to make student organized events and guest speakers a priority, and in doing so, we have reviewed and supported a procedure that specifically addresses all the school-wide functions, whether student organized or not. So because we are changing things, we want to be very open and honest with the community and tell them what the process is. And Keith, we would love to have you share some of the details of this new procedure that we're going to be using across all our campuses.
Sure. So the guest speaker proposal packet will take the staff member that is either the leader of the student organization, principal teacher, all the way through, from the time they have conceptualized, this is a speaker, I want to bring someone from the outside into the classroom to enhance the educational value of the lesson, all the way through till the end of the presentation. With that, the staff member would put together a proposal following our protocols, which would identify who the speaker's going to be, what the terms of their speaking engagement are, so what the parameters are, what they're in there to speak about, how that relates back to the lesson or the school goals, mission, if it's a school-wide event. Then the speaker themselves provides details in their words so that we, they understand what it is that they're there to do and provide. The staff member does a vetting process on them, including a background check via our policy for that, which is eye check as it is in most school districts. That proposal then goes on to the school administrator for initial review, and then up to central office for either the elementary or secondary directors review and final approval. There's some timelines involved with that, a week, a couple of weeks ahead of time so that there's time to review, make changes if necessary. Once a speaker's been identified, that yes, they're going to come into a classroom five days before, four days before, the teacher is going to inform the parents, so and so is going to come in, this is what they're going to be talking about. And if any parent wishes to pull their child out for that day, 24 hours notice, written notice, that they're going to opt out of that opportunity. Students are not, are held harmless for that from an academic standpoint, and the teachers will make it a different arrangements for them during that time.
Thank you for the details of the procedure, and we all got a chance to talk about this separately to me and Trusty Colon, because I had something happen this week. Thank you for taking the lead as well, so. So thank you for updating us.
Yeah, thank you for the update.
Yeah, appreciate it. So it is officially being updated and implemented.
Yep.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report, item 3.
Yes, just a few quick items tonight, just again, we did this last week, but I wanted to do it today at the formal board meeting to offer a big thank you to the community for their support with the sinking fund. It passed overwhelmingly, which certainly was a message about how much this community cares about its kids, about its programs, about its facilities here. And we're all very, very proud of that result, and certainly a recognition of the Board of Education and their man. and their management of the school district funds. And so thank you so much again to the community for supporting us. And those dollars will go to very, very good use to help continue to renovate our facilities. Had a chance with Keith today to visit the International Academy. I know President Southward mentioned that we were going to go out there. We're actually out there today and did a walk around of the school, had a chance to look at what the upcoming facility upgrades will be. You know, we're doing a secure vestibule there too, making some other renovations. And also wanted just to look at the facility of what else potentially could be done over there over time. And just a reminder, this is a program obviously that we're very proud of, but it's a program that we're a consort, we're in a consortium with 13 other school districts who send students to the program. We are the fiscal agent for the program, which means we do a lot of the administrative work and are reimbursed for that with the 13 school system and consortium. And so we cover administrative costs. The facility is our responsibility and the facility costs, we're reimbursed for those costs, technology costs, et cetera. We're reimbursed for those costs because again, it's an equal partnership with these 13 different school districts to run that. And so that was a, a nice, a nice visit today. Another nice recognition from the U.S. News and World Report today. All of our elementary and middle schools were recognized as best schools by the U.S. News and World Report. And we get a badge for that, what, I'm not quite sure what that means, but we get the News, World Report badge recognizing us as a best school. And so that was exciting for us to hear. And last, just would want to, would just want to finish up by saying, I hope everybody has a great couple of days off. I hope our staff get a chance to rest up a little bit and enjoy their families and happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leepa. Next is the Superintendent Search Update, and I'll be giving that. I'm part of the Superintendent Search Committee led by President Southward along with Trustee Hill. We have nothing new to report at this time, so that's all I have to say on that. Item Five, Consent Agenda. In Trustee Van Gemmerck's absence, Trustee Colan will do us the honor.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation detailed in the consent as follows. Approve of minutes from regular meeting of October 26, 2023. Approve of minutes from the study session, November 9, 2023. Request to approve dispersment reports. Request to approve monthly financial reports. Request to approve personnel actions.
A second.
Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? All right, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Trustee Colan. Next item is Agenda Item 6A, Board Business.
I move the Board of Education to amend its calendar of meetings by changing December 7, 2023 study session to a broad workshop with a 6:00 PM start as presented.
Any discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. Next, moving on to Item Seven, Spatial Recognition. First on the agenda, 7A, Celebrating Success. Our returning state champions, the Bloomfield Hills Boys Tennis Team. Over to Greg Burks, head coach, and Mike Outry, Director of Athletics.
Or Avis Nager, who's here, filling in.
Thank you for everyone. I'm honored to stand here before you to celebrate our 2023 Varsity Boys Tennis Team who earned the title of State Champions. The team ranked number one throughout the entire season and claimed their second state champion title in a row and fifth since opening the high school, Bloomfield Hills Blackhawks, winning the title with an impressive 36 out of 40 points. The team set a BHS record by taking 10 individual championship wins during the competition on October 21 in Midland. At this time, I'd like to recognize the following athletes. Hopefully I'll get all the names pronounced correctly, so I apologize if I do not. Will you please come up when I call your name? For individual state championship winners, Pierce Shea, number two singles. Connor Shea, number three singles. Merrick Chernett and Erin Rose, number one doubles.
Maybe there's more. Maybe there's more.
Just stay right up here, right in the center, please.
Okay, Brian Rose and Michael Dillon, number two doubles. Keirth Lingam and Dominic Pascarella, number three doubles. Ethan Endelman and Asher Langwell, number four doubles. Now to recognize our state semifinalists, we have Jonah Chernett, number one singles. We have Zeb Spiegel, number four, singles. Our final four athletes played an amazing regular season and helped the team to victory. Again, please come up when I call your name. Noah Kaplan. Noah Rashid. Sajad Doshi. And Meyer Saperstein. Again, congratulations to Coach, Coach Greg Burks and the entire boys tennis team. You made us proud once again.
All right. Next, Spatial Recognition on the agenda. Agenda Item 7B, Celebrating Success, AP Scholars with Distinction. Over to Dan Hartley, Principal at Bloomfield Hills High School.
All right, as the proud principal of Bloomfield Hills High School, I'm honored to stand before you tonight to celebrate several of our current BHHS students who have been recognized by the College Board as AP Scholars with Distinction. Each year, many Bloomfield Hills High School students take advanced placement courses, which are college-level classes. The Advanced Placement Program recognizes students who have consistently demonstrated high achievement on the AP tests in May each year. Students who are named AP Scholars with Distinction are those who received an average score of at least 3.5 out of 5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. So pretty exemplary work by the students recognized tonight. So the following BHHS students were named AP Scholars with Distinctions. I know some of them are not able to be here tonight, but I will read through all the names. So as your name is read, come on up, you'll get a certificate and stay up here for your photo opportunity. Kareem El Segir. Michelle Barnett. Gavin Coe. Gavin Coat. Lucy Dixon. Robert Gaines. Milan Gandhi. Nicholas Getler. Michael Hakopian. Elizabeth Harst. Aline Sai. Matthew Lamorand. Forrest Quinn. Nino Rizoki. Talia Reddy. Benjamin Saperstein. Nathan Sherman. Reed Smith. Amalia Socia. And Ashley Vofrey. Way to represent Bloomfield Hills High School and go Blackhawks.
All right. Next on the agenda. Item 8A, Administrative Appointment.
I move that the Board of Education.
Let's, let's give a minute just for everybody to.
All right.
It's a little loud. Hey, y'all, we have, we still have our meeting going on, if you don't mind being quiet, we appreciate it.
I move the Board of Education appoint Candace Moynihan to Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations with effective date of December 13, 2023.
Second.
And if I can provide a little bit of background information.
Please.
Sure. First of all, I thought all the people here were here for Candace tonight, but only, only a handful. But we are, we're so excited. As you know, we have had, this is an open position, a very important open position in our school district for some time. And we're very excited to have, very excited to have Candace Moynihan as a recommendation to you to fill this Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations position. Just a little background on, on Candace. She has a long history in, in education finance, starting out with the Garden City Public School System, moving on to the Lawd Lakes Consolidated School System. And most recently, she's been the Director of Finance for the Troy School District, which actually has a deputy superintendent. So she really was handling the vast majority of the business office responsibilities in Troy. Has been looking at her career path and, and we're just lucky that our stars sort of aligned, that she was looking for an opportunity to be the, the lead person in a school district at a time when we had an opening. And so we're just really happy with, with her experience. She also was an auditor, auditor at one time of school districts. And believe it or not, one of her very first clients was the Bloomfield Hills School District. And so that was many years ago. She also holds a master's degree in science, of science and accountancy at Walsh College and has a Bachelor of Arts in Business Administration from Wayne State. Also is a certified public accountant and a member of the Michigan School Business officials. And so she brings a wealth of experience and background to the position. And we're just really, really excited to bring this recommendation. And upon final vote by the board, we'll ask Candace to come up and introduce herself.
Thank you, Randy. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? All right, motion passes five zero. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent Leepa and members of the board. I'm Candace Moynihan. It's a pleasure to meet all of you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am very humbled. I am very grateful for this opportunity here at Bloomfield Hills Schools in this capacity. I do look forward to joining the district next month. I'm excited to be here. I look forward to working with administration and leadership, the Board of Education, together as we align our resources to meet all of the educational goals of our students, the needs of our students, and of course, our district mission and strategic goals as well. So thank you for your vote of confidence. Would have been very awkward otherwise. But I really look forward to working with all of you very soon next month. So thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Maybe just over here because the podium is there. Okay, let's come together. I feel like you should be in this, Keith. I don't have superintendent in my table. There we go. So nice to meet you.
Congratulations. Looking forward to next time.
Any public comment?
So next on the agenda is Item 9A, Public Comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? All right. So I guess we move on to Item 10, which is Adjournment. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.